Good evening, everyone. Tonight is a regular meeting of the South Kingston Planning Board. The date is Tuesday, July 22, 2025. The first item on our agenda is roll call. Susan Axelrod.
Here.
Joe Murphy.
Here.
Liz Karp.
Here.
Robin Pathier is absent. Caper Wilson is absent, and Maria Mack is here. Our next agenda item is approval of minutes June 24, 2025, regular session. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Hearing none. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 24 meeting?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Susan. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Liz. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next agenda item is a pre-application concept plan. Frederick Hazard Minor Subdivision. As board members are well aware, pre-application serves as an opportunity to exchange information. There's nothing formal about this meeting. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
Madam Chair, would you issue your...
Excuse me?
Which agenda item was that?
It's item one, Frederick Hazard Minor Subdivision. Shall we move on to the next agenda item and see if anyone turns up? All right. The next agenda item is a Minor Subdivision Pre-Application Concept Review. Geschholder Subdivision.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Matthew Landry, on behalf of the applicant, Paul Geschlier. My client is in attendance, but I will try to be brief. This is just a pre-application review for the property at 229 Sagatucket Road. It's a fairly benign pre-application. It's a one-lot subdivision, but there are a couple of procedural concerns that are present with this application, which is why we wanted to bring it in front of the Board and staff as a pre-app to put it in front of you and to vet the project before it proceeds any further. It's a roughly 11-acre parcel with frontage along Sagatucket Road. It actually has access to the existing home and accessory structure on the building via an easement from the property immediately to the west. This parcel was one of 10 that were originally developed as part of what's known as the Irwin Platte, which was approved as a residential compound back in 1980. This is one of the outlier lots because it's one of the only lots that has its own independent frontage on a public street. The rest of the Irwin lots, and I think I submitted a copy of the Irwin Platte with our submission for reference, most of those are located to the north along a very long cul-de-sac to the rear. There's a tree farm and a number of other parcels that get their access off that separate drive. And again, this lot is a little bit unique because it has its own lot frontage on Sagatucket Road. So it's a little bit different than a traditional residential compound where most of the lots have access off a singular road with reduced frontage and zoning requirements. And as you know, residential compounds generally do not allow further subdivision as part of one of the conditions of approval as a residential compound. This, the original property for these 10 lots was 129 acres, and, you know, most of these lots have between eight and 12 acres or so, and, you know, certainly could have yielded substantially more lots under a traditional subdivision application. What my client is proposing to do, he has lived on this property for a number of years and is in the process of restoring the existing home on the property, and, you know, he would like to reside in town and maintain a residence here, but frankly, the taxes and cost of living and the upkeep of that property are becoming unmanageable and difficult to sustain, you know, into his later years. So he's looking to sell the existing home and that property and carve off a lot for him to reside in and keep it. This is not intended to be sold or developed for profit. He's intending to sell the house, but try to keep a small portion of it that is more manageable from a tax perspective, a more modest home. But again, he wants to maintain as much as he can and stay on the property. But that would require two waivers from this Board if it were to proceed. This is not unusual to modify a prior application or petition or recorded Platte. I was talking to council and staff earlier that there was a similar request not that long ago for relief from a residential compound petition, so it's not unusual. The outlier in this case is that the restrictions and the covenants that were recorded with the land evidence records that were required in conjunction with the approval do not allow further subdivision unless it comes back in front of the Board at a later date. So the regulations and the covenants that these lots were subject to actually do contemplate and acknowledge further subdivision as long as you come back to the Board. However, that would still require a waiver from this Board under your subdivision regulations to allow carving off just that one lot. Again, I think it's a unique situation because most residential compounds have singular lot frontage on a single road, or at least in my experience, it's typically how they're situated. This lot is very far apart and separate from the rest of the compound. It wouldn't have any immediate impact or significant effect on the compound as a whole. The density, one lot per 200,000 square feet, that's required would be far in excess of that. It wouldn't run afoul of what that compound regulation requires. The wetlands were flagged. This lot would conform with all zoning. It could be situated completely outside of the jurisdictional area. It's got access to water. We can cite an OWTS, and we can have frontage directly off of Sagatucket Road. So it really is a by-right subdivision, if you will, if not for that residential compound. And the other lots in this compound are not similarly situated, so I wouldn't be afraid of, you know, opening up that possibility to those other lots. Most of the lots to the north, I believe all of them have wells. There's a number of wetlands to the rear. So this lot really is best situated for a subdivision. It's one lot. It's for my client. You know, he'd be able to carve it off and maintain a residence in town. The other waiver, if you will, or request would be to maintain the existing rear lot frontage down to 20 feet. It would be under the flexible frontage provisions of your ordinance, so allows the Board to reduce the frontage down to 20 feet. We've done that. So the access, you can see there's a sliver of 20 feet along Sagatucket Road for the existing lot and the existing home. The new lot that would be created would have sufficient frontage. It would have the 200 feet meet all the required setbacks. The reason we did that, and I think there's room to adjust it if necessary, is again because the driveway access for that home is actually a shared driveway via an easement over the property to the west. I'm not sure why it was configured that way since they had all that frontage, but this would maintain that driveway for that lot. Nothing would change. All the existing systems would stay the same. But this new lot would propose a curb cut off of Sagatucket, and that's a town road, so it wouldn't require DOT. And again, it has well, all the other systems. So again, I think there's some technical issues that council and I would probably have to discuss in terms of relief from the residential compound, but the subdivision regulations do allow waivers from your regulations if it's in pursuit of good planning purposes. I believe this is one of those such cases. Again, this is unique from other compound subdivisions because it does have completely independent and separate lot access. It's for one lot. This lot could technically yield five lots, you know, if it went under a comp permit or some other mechanism. So it's a fairly benign request. It's a by-right law otherwise, and the restrictive covenants that were recorded do contemplate subdivision as long as you come back to the planning Board. All the Platte owners would certainly get notice, and we'd have to go through the public hearing process. But as for the restrictive covenants, we do believe it does allow, and we believe your regulations allow waivers, and there was a case not that long ago where the planning Board did hear a similar request. So procedural, I think it is proper. Okay, good.
What was the name of that?
I have to find it. I don't have it with me, but I can, I'll share it with you.
Okay. And do you recall any specifics about that case?
Yeah, so there was...
All right. Do you know how many lots were in that residential compound?
In the original? I don't. I'd have to look at it again. So there was a subsequent appeal from the planning Board request, and it was all based on what the process was for approving relief from that residential compound.
Got it.
There was a vote, and then it was appealed to Superior Court. It came back on findings of fact issues, so it didn't necessarily turn on the process itself, but there was a public hearing, and it was allowed to request a waiver from the
Perhaps before we begin with any questions or comments, Peter, could you clarify some of these things? It's certainly an unusual request. Residential compounds have a very, have had a very important place in our regulations.
Sure. So there are a couple of issues why this... So I'm going to be fair to the applicant. My initial opinion was that this could not be done, but I haven't reviewed everything that he's provided, so out of fairness, I won't say that's my final opinion because I do want to take a look at whatever he might provide in that regard. But that being said, there are a lot of issues why this may not be allowed. One is that subdivision regulations state that you can't further subdivide a property that's been subdivided as a residential compound. The second, there's also a zoning ordinance provision related to residential compounds, so we'd have to look into that. There are restricted covenants that are recorded as part of approving the plan, so I'd need to take a look at those two to see what they require. And then also, there's the decision of approval itself, which likely has a condition on that they can't further subdivide, you know, so we'd have to take a look at that. I'd take a look at what the applicant would provide to us, saying, you know, here's the procedural mechanism I think we can use to get past each of those hurdles. You know, my initial thought was just because there are so many hurdles that you probably can't... The biggest, one of the biggest troubles to me that I still need to look at was the restricted covenant, which unlike a lot of the other procedural requirements, doesn't have a built-in mechanism where you can always ask for relief. Now, there may be in the face of the document that there is, but I wanted to take a look at that and make sure. All that being said, I don't think we're going to resolve the legal issues tonight, but I think what may be useful to the applicant is putting aside whether it can be done, you know, whether it should be done from the perspective of the planning Board. That way, either way, they know that it's either going to be a very difficult procedural hoop that may end up with them being able to get it or not, but if they know at the pre-application what's okay to indicate if you think so, that it's not a road that you're, even if it is possible that you would likely grant, that it might give them some insight of whether or not that's something to pursue.
Thank you. Any initial comments from Board members?
I have a question.
Hi.
Hi.
So on the map, on the location map, you had said it was a 10... The residential compound that extended to the north. It looks like individual lots on this map. Could you explain to me how that was divided and whether those are individual lots or...
I may actually have the original Platte I can share.
Some good, some more history would be helpful to me.
So the map that I'm passing out is a copy of the original residential compound subdivision. It shows how the lots are situated, the access. It was approved in 1980. It was originally, it was 129-acre parcel of land. We did some density calculations and looked at some of the historic zoning. I don't think it was terribly different than what it is now under the residential compound regs. It was one dwelling unit per 200,000 square feet was a requirement. I think the total yield was, it could have yielded about 26 units. Residential compound regulations limit subdivision up to 10 lots maximum. I don't think that's changed from 1980 to now. So the analysis here is that it was 10 lots carved out of 129 acres with that density. Carving out an additional 80,000-square-foot lot would not upset any of those regulations but for the additional lot. That would not be part of that subdivision. So that Irwin Platte, we're Lot 9 along Sagatucket Road. It's along the left of the page, so that's the subject lot that we're talking about. And again, for reasons unclear to me, there's an easement, a driveway easement over the property to the west. They had plenty of frontage. I'm not sure why the access wasn't provided that. I don't know if it's because of wetlands or whatnot, but that easement access, I don't even see on this plan, but that's how they've historically accessed their property.
I guess it's just some comments and thoughts, not really questions. I mean, ultimately, I'm going to rely on legal staff to give us an advisory opinion whether this is, should be done or can be done. But assuming that after you provide information to legal, they say that it's the discretion of the Board, my concerns and thoughts would be, I guess, on the pro side, it's a large lot. It's directly on Sagatucket. We are in need of additional housing and affordable housing and not having such large barriers. But on the other side, my concern would be that when we put such a thing in a recorded document that people that buy land look at that document and rely on that document... So with that said, if Peter says it's the discretion, one of the things I'd be looking at is the neighboring property owners, whether they are adamantly against it or if they're in support of it. So with that said, if it does come in front of the Board and it is our discretion, I think the applicant be well advised to talk to the neighboring property owners, try to get them on board, understand what they believe the impacts are, and make sure that in their proposal, they're mitigating those impacts. If they're mitigating the impacts and you got the neighboring properties on board and legal tells us it's our discretion, and then I probably would be supportive of it. So there's a lot of ifs there, but that's where I stand.
Certainly. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
It looks like the heart of the property is a wetland with a buffer. And then I read the report given to you by the wetland professionals who said the project area lies within a natural heritage area and is mapped on the DEM, Environmental Resource Maps. And the DEM has the authority to increase wetland buffer zones in these environmentally sensitive areas. How on this house lot with a wetland squat in the middle of it with swamp extending off to the side, significant setbacks and the potential for more setbacks, could you explain to me how this is indeed a buildable lot?
Certainly. So Sergio Trinzia went out and looked at the property, and we had Ed Azovinus provide the wetland report. They re-flagged all of the wetlands because they had been done a few years ago. We had redone that. The jurisdictional area that you see is the outer ring, which is 100 feet. Speaking, and I apologize if Sergio couldn't be here this evening. He was getting honored with an award in Connecticut. We felt like that was more important to be at, so that's why he's not here. So I will speak in his stead, but he did confirm without question that a house could be situated with all its components outside of that wetland area, which actually may not even necessitate a DEM permit, a wetland permit. If it's with, it can be within the jurisdictional area, just not the buffer zone. So there's a 25-foot buffer off the wetland and then a 25-foot construction setback. So those are the inner rings around the wetland. That outer ring is just a jurisdictional area. You're allowed to build within that, but it would require some type of DEM wetland permit. We are not proposing construction anywhere in that setback or the boundary. And based on his confirmation, there's no question, his estimation, that you could cite a home that conforms with zoning and be outside of those setbacks. And if it were to get reviewed and because it's in a natural heritage area, there's some classification that would extend those boundaries, we can obviously explore that and would have to comply with that, but we believe there's enough room even outside of the jurisdictional area to cite all the components, so we wouldn't run afoul of any
Thank you. Obviously, we need to wait for some research to occur from legal. My initial concern is that residential compounds were intended to be a less stringent type of development that allows for lesser standards than a traditional development, and the idea was to create areas that were less dense in nature, particularly in environmentally sensitive areas. I know that we have, we don't see these very often, but the ones that exist are really important to the community, and I would be really concerned about either setting some kind of precedent or chipping away at the intent of the purpose of a residential compound. So I would be a little concerned about this going forward, and it sounds as though it would be somewhat complex regardless, changing this to sort of an FDRP with the two waivers. I'm not particularly comfortable with what the future impact would be and... Anything else, Liz? Anything from staff?
I would agree with Peter this evening with regards to being able to hear the testimony from Mr. Landry and his thoughts on how he feels his client may be eligible for a waiver, but I think the planning Board has articulated their concerns that a residential compound, by the very nature of its original development, application process, in essence stated that this is the division of the land as a compound. We're seeking relief from regulatory processes at that time, and in exchange for that, we will not further divide the land. I think there is a reference, I'll agree with Mr. Landry on this, that there is a reference to future subdivision. He's leaving out the terminology that refers to administrative subdivision, which allows lot lines within the development to move, but doesn't necessarily allow for the creation of an additional lot. So I think this needs to be explored a little deeper by our legal counsel, and then any application that comes forward is, as all applications, is at the risk of the applicant when they're seeking relief.
And Madam Chair, just to follow up, you know, prior to the application being filed, and I'm glad that it's down for a pre-app tonight, if Mr. Landry wanted to just provide a memo of how he feels this could be brought within the planning Board's discretion, particularly addressing the subdivision regulation language that he's aware of, any provisions of the zoning ordinance, and any restrictive covenants recorded, and then finally, what his position on is with regard to any changes to the approved plan and the decision approving the plan that he would need to see and whether he can meet the procedural requirements of asking for that. So, you know, depending on the feedback tonight, they may decide to go forward, they may not, but if you do, it would be helpful if I had your position on those things so I could respond.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. I anticipated needing to do that, so I appreciate the dialogue. And again, we wanted to do this in a collaborative effort and put it in front of the Board before we put too much effort into it, so I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you. I think we're... We've heard enough comments from folks. Jamie, back to the first item, which appears to be a no-show. Are they aware of the, assuming they're aware of the date and the...
Again, they are the ones who requested to be put on the agenda for preliminary discussions. So as far as we're concerned, they are aware, and it's pre-app.
Right. So it's nothing that needs to be tabled or continued?
Yeah.
So we'll see if they return. The next F1 election of officers, I don't know if folks want to table this to the next meeting when we have more people, or what do people want to do?
I'm okay with tabling it, however, I don't really think it's necessary. I'm okay with tabling it if that's what people want to do, however, I don't think it's necessary. I don't think either Robin or Caper has expressed interest in filling one of the leadership roles, and I think we would be fine if we went forward tonight.
Liz, Susan?
Sure.
So with that said, I'll make a motion that we nominate Maria as the chairwoman of the South Kingston Plan Board for the next year.
Second? Second from Liz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
I'll also make the motion that we have Susan as the vice chair or, yeah, vice chair of the Plan Board over the next year.
Thank you.
Motion from Joe? Second?
I'll second.
Second from Liz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. And to make it a hat trick, I'll do another motion for Liz to be the secretary of the Plan Board for the next year.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Congratulations. Next agenda item, decisions made by the administrative officer on behalf of the Plan Board during the month of June 2025. And thank you for putting this on the agenda. I think it's good to keep everybody in the loop, so to speak.
Yes, so no, we have a couple in the queue, but no decisions have been made this past month. Based on my recollection, we do have some things that are going through final review process and recording. Just as an update, Broad Rock was recorded Monday afternoon. Monday afternoon, and we have a few in final phases, so.
Very good. Anything we should be aware of coming up? And then perhaps how is the...
July 30th is very important.
Yes. How is the PR going for that?
So we, our office undertook a mailing to all of the individuals within the zone that are affected. We had, I believe, 269, plus or minus a few, letters that went out, contained a one-page bulletin of the announcement as well as the trifold. We've received a few inquiries seeking additional information on what's going on, what's the night entail, and we've supplied that information to individuals.
And has there been any additional outreach or conversations with property owners or...
Oh, I know Brian had some initial conversations with members of EDC, but we're waiting for feedback from them.
And it's Wednesday.
6:30 start time. The intent is to have about a two-hour meeting, 6:30 to 8:30. Staff as well as a consultant will be available for questions, and I'm sure we can linger a little bit longer than that.
Very good.
Very good. Designation of duty member for next TRC meeting, which is...
We can do that either 9:00 AM or 1:00 PM. Joe's smiling. Is he volunteering? Liz?
Thank you, Liz.
No, I'm signing.
Okay, thank you, Liz.
Very good. Is there anything else from anyone? Someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Motion from Joe? Second?
Second. Did we just break a record?
I think we did break a record. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Reading adjourned. Thanks, everyone.